Mr. Houchens is absent. Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Shelton is absent. Dr. Newman?
Aye, here.
Mr. Fraley?
Here to share acknowledges that we do have a quorum. We'll move forward with the continued agenda, or excuse me, regular agenda.
Well, the continued agenda, the first two items on it. Item number one, by the City Planning Commission for a zoning tax amendment to Table 9-A of the city zoning ordinance to include microbreweries and allowable use by special exception in the HCG III, Kent Historic and Cultural Conservation District. And item number two, which is a request by Champion Brewing Company LLC for the following applications at 739 Yorma Street. A is a change of zoning from HCG I to HCG III, and B is a special exception to operate a microbrewery. Those applications have been withdrawn, so I'm going to give you a motion on that. We also have a request to continue three items. That would be item number two from the regular agenda. That is the American Legion Addicts Post V for the following special exceptions at 923 Glen Rock Road. A is to amend a previously granted special exception for an entertainment establishment. B is to operate an after-hours membership organization. Three, Wawa, is a request for continuance also for the following special exceptions at 701 North Newtown Road. A is to operate a convenience store with fuel sales. B is the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption. And item number six, Granny's Country Cooking, for a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages at 628 35th Street, Suites 636A and 636B. The last three are requested to be continued until the public hearing on September 28th. The first two are requests to be withdrawals. The motion before you would be to accept the withdrawals and to continue the requested items till the public hearing to be held on Thursday, September 28th, 2:30 PM in City Council Chambers, 11th Floor, City Hall Building, Civic Center, Norfolk, Virginia. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye, thank you, Lenny.
We now move to item number one on the regular agenda, which is Monument Development Two LLC for the following applications at 2607 Colonial Avenue. A is an amendment to the future land use designation in the general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, from institutional to multifamily corridor. B is to designate the existing structure as a Norfolk historic landmark, and C is a special exception for multifamily development with more than six dwelling units.
Thank you, Lenny. Chair acknowledges, I assume, I'm sorry, Susan. I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
As Lenny indicated, this is a request by Monument Development Two LLC. The request, they've got three requests. One is for, to amend the general plan. Two is to designate the structure as a Norfolk historic landmark, and the last one is for a special exception for multifamily, more than six units. So this is the site here, it's located on the west side of Colonial Avenue between 26th and 27th. I think you all know it as the Boys and Girls Club, built in 1949 for the Boys and Girls Club. It is, again, the proposal is for an adaptive reuse of a building for multifamily. The zoning will remain the same, it will remain IN1, institutional. The general plan would be amended from institutional to multifamily corridor. And then the ARB, who heard this request, did recommend approval and forward that recommendation to you all to designate it as a historic landmark. As you know, once something is designated as a Norfolk historic landmark, that then provides some flexibility for the use. So it does allow them to apply for a special exception for uses that are allowed in the commercial and residential districts. So in this case, they are also applying for a special exception for multifamily. And in this case, they are proposing to use the existing building, and I might add that too, they are also applying for historic tax credits. So we're really keeping the intent of that historic building built in 1949 and converting it to 41 multifamily units. They do have parking available on-site. There are one space per unit, which is what we require, and then there's an additional spaces that are located along 26th Street. Don't quite meet our current regulations, but they're there now, they've been used all along, so generally, we don't allow them to count towards their requirement. They meet the requirement elsewhere, but I just point that out because they do have some additional parking on the site. This is the building as it is today, multicolored. I just thought this was interesting, so you can see, the original building was built in 1949, but there have been at least three additions. So 1949, again, the original building, and then in 1956, as you can see, the rear part was added. I think that was in addition to where the pool area was and some additional spaces. And then again, in 1986, there was another major expansion to the building. All of that will be preserved. And actually, on this photo, you can also see those spaces along 26th Street that kind of back up on the site, they're angled. I wanted to show you here, so we've got, on the left-hand side is the existing floor plan, on the right side is how they're proposing to modify it and change it into multifamily. You can see where the different units are. On the left-hand side, you can see that box kind of there, that's where the pool is now, so that will be going away. Looking to the new layout, where the units are laid out, they will have one extra-large unit there, so I think you can see that, but they will be putting apartments where the pool space is now, so that's the first floor. And then you've got kind of the same thing on the second floor. There is parts of the building that are one-story and parts of the building that are two-story, so it is a little bit of a challenge in laying out the apartments, so I did want to show you that. I also wanted to show you the proposed elevations, and again, these are the elevations that were brought to ARB and approved. So we've got the elevation looking down 26th Street. Again, it's very similar, they're really abiding by the character of the existing building and trying to keep that intact. Not many changes really have been made since it was first built in 1949. From Colonial Avenue, again, you can definitely recognize what they're proposing and what is there now, hopefully different colors. And then this is along 27th Street, seeing the different repairs. And then the last one, which is from the rear, so from basically where the parking lot will be, and you can see where the domed building is, that's where the, there's space for the parking there. And then lastly, I did want to show you, so this is the landscape plan. So staff is recommending approval for the amendment to the general plan, is recommending that you also recommend approval for the historic, the designation as the Norfolk historic landmark, and then for the special exception to allow the adaptive reuse for the 41 residential units. So again, staff is recommending support on all three requests.
Susan Hev, thank you. Have you gotten any feedback from Civic League over there?
The president is here, so I'll let him speak.
Okay.
Question on the third side that you showed, was there, yeah, right there. Is, on the elevation, is that a setback actually? Because in actuality, the building is set back at the top, the second floor is set back from the first, you see? But on the elevation, it might be that, but I don't know, I can't read it as such.
I'll let the applicant address that.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan. Here to answer any questions with regard to this application, Chris Johnson. Thank you, say this one thing. You do want to speak?
I don't know, I thought...
Help yourself, you're up there now, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, I'll just answer this question. Chris Johnson, Principal of Monument Companies, 1425 East Carey Street, Richmond, Virginia, 23219. There's not going to be any changes to the setbacks on the elevation, it'll stay just as is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Also here to answer questions, Alan Sullivan. Does not wish to speak, Johnny Williams. Diane, you're going to have to help me, Diane. Don't wish to speak either, okay? And Charles Johnson does have some concerns. Come along, Mr. Johnson, express those concerns if you would.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission, the director, assistant director, and the deputy city attorney. My name is Charles Johnson, I live at 3226 Omaha-Hondroy Avenue, and I am the president of the Park Place Civic League. I'm here today not to speak in favor or oppose in reference to the Civic League, to this project, I'm here just to speak to you about some concerns that I may have according to the board. This week, the Monument Incorporated met with the board, it was on Monday night, and at that time, they presented the project. And we had a Q and A on the project, and everything went okay, but we thought that the project should be presented to the Civic League itself. So we are requesting at this time that if they could present this to the full body, even if it's approved today, if they would come back on September 11th, that's when we have a next meeting, so the full body will know what is going on. That's one thing why I'm here for today. Beyond that, I would like to note a few points about this project and the surrounding area. First of all, the Park Place Civic League has always attempted to pursue what we call the healthy neighborhood concept. The healthy neighborhood concept is the idea that if you're going to bring an investment in, it should be something that people are going to invest in and be at market rate. We are satisfied, based on our meeting with the Monument Incorporated representatives on Monday, that they are going to bring in at market or above market rate, so we're definitely satisfied with that project. We're concerned that it would be an affordable-type project. And then other concerns was in reference to parking. There are some members in the community who feel that this could be an area of congestion because it's between 26th Street and 27th Street, which are two major highways going east and west. The Monument Incorporated did let us know that they were going to look into a traffic story or investigation to see how many cars were going up and down the street and what problems it would present to the community. Well, we are concerned that if this is allowed, then the city should look into maybe making the three lanes of 26th Street and 27th Street two lanes, as they have done already from Collie Avenue to Hampton Boulevard, and also have done at the other end. So why not make the entire full of 26th, 27th Street? And that would be good for parking, it would also be for safety, it would reduce the amount of traffic and problems that we've had along that. At 26th and Colonial, we have two members of our Civic League, John Porter and David Hausman of Hanson Biscuit, and that whole area is really developing. It's what we wanted for our new, what we call, healthy neighborhood. So we're not opposed to the project itself, we would just like for the city and the developers to look into, you know, the congestion that it may occur and it may not occur. Also, along with that, there's the parking. There's parking that's going to be provided for each person there. Some concerns is that the houses next door to the property, what impact will it have on them? It may not have any major impact, but the neighbors may want to voice their opinion. That's another reason why we're asking them to come before the Civic League, in case those residents have questions on the subject. And lastly, at this point, the Park Place, I guess you would say, historical overlay plan, they are requesting that this facility go from institutional to the Park Place overlay plan for historical district. We don't have any opposition to that because we are glad that they are going to keep the building the way it is and take away all the different colors on the building, that's going to be a great sign, but we are considering down the road, where do we stop? I mean, how do you look into determining that this is a historical site and you're going to make changes, you're not going to make changes on this? This may be a good move for the Park Place area, it may not be a good move for the Park Place area, but I'm saying to the commission, when people come before you and they're putting applications for historical designations in the Park Place area, please keep in mind, does it fit into the historical nature of Park Place? I would say at this time, it looks that way, according to 1949. So overall, I think that it's going to be a great project. I think it's a project that stands up to what we consider to be the healthy neighborhood, but we would like for you to consider them coming to our Civic League meeting on the 11th and presenting it to the body. We are asking that they look more into the congestion, possibly traffic issues that are there, and also the historical designation. This time, thank you for your time, and that's all I have to present unless you have a question to me.
I do, very quickly. So is your hope then that the applicant will come back to your regular Civic League meeting for information purposes only, is that what I'm understanding?
For information purposes, but also in reference to votes. We don't meet in July and August, only the board meets, and that's why they came before the board. They were going to come before the board in July, but something, some things came up, and so the meeting was moved to the August meeting. And so they did present at the board meeting in August. But our meeting, first meeting is not until September 11th.
Okay.
Any other?
Any other questions, commissions, comment?
Not from Mr. Johnson. When will council see this? When will he be scheduled to see this? Is it after September 11th, I assume?
It would be at the second meeting that council holds in September.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Here to speak against this application, Modesto Hoyas. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Modesto Hoyas, I live here in Norfolk. I do have properties here in the area. My basic concern is if the Civic League have been given...
Sir, could you give us a mailing address?
Yes, sir.
Your mailing address?
8821 Chesapeake Boulevard in Norfolk.
Okay, thank you.
Is if the Civic League have been given the opportunity to express the desire of other utilization of this building, of this historical building? Because I do understand for years that the major interest of the city was to build this area as a single-family home, to create the largest possible numbers of single-family homes. Myself, I was affected because I wanted to convert a three-unit that I had into a duplex. It was a triplex converted into duplex. That application was denied. And the reason that the gentleman told me was that the city intention was to convert all of these properties into a single-family home. So I see the, my position is, how come this need to be converted into 41 units when the interest of the city was to convert the largest proportion of these houses into single-family homes? I do understand that it's a historical issue in the building, but that building also could be utilized in a different way, for example, a center of learning or some other facility that the city can be utilized and the community can benefit also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any question or comment, commissioners?
Sir, when did your case come before?
It did not come before the planning commission. And the explanation given to him was not as he depicted it.
But I didn't think it was terribly germane to what we're considering right now. So we'll move forward with our application here.
I'd like to ask the applicant a question.
Certainly, absolutely.
So you heard Mr. Johnson's Civic League's request for you guys to come back, so we can't make that a stipulation as part of our approval, but I think I would be comfortable saying, let's move this forward with a vote today and ask you to please, you know, visit the Civic League with Mr. Johnson on September 11th. So he can voice, if he has any concerns after that, he can voice it to council during that meeting if he doesn't have any problems and he cannot, so.
We will absolutely be there and certainly always want to engage the neighborhood in anything that we're doing.
Appreciate that.
Great.
Ready for motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, the motion before you is to recommend that the general plan amendment and the application for landmark designation and the special exemption be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
First, I'd like to thank the applicant for the investment that they're making in Norfolk. I vote aye.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
I too would like to echo Mr. Murphy's comments. We're always looking in our built-up city for adaptive reuses of existing structures. Appreciate you taking the initiative to want to reuse this building, it's been settling for some time, and we certainly wish you the best of luck with it. I vote aye. And we will make that recommendation to city council, thank you.
The next application moves us down to number four, Sabour Carabinho, for a special exception to operate an eating and drinking establishment at 7616 Sewell's Point Road.
Hello, commissioners, before you, oh, sorry, is an application from Sabour Carabinho, which is an existing restaurant at 7616 Sewell's Point Road in the Sewell's Point Place Shopping Plaza. The applicant is requesting to operate an eating and drinking establishment in order to add on-premise alcohol sales. The property is owned C2, with several other commercial uses in the area. And with this application, the applicant and property owner have agreed to install onsite improvements, including a dumpster for the entire plaza, as well as perimeter landscaping along Sewell's Point Road. And we're giving them a six-month time span to do so. The hours of operation and the proposed hours for the sale of alcoholic beverages are limited to 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 11:00 AM until 6:00 PM on Sunday, with a capacity of 32 seats indoors, zero seats outdoors, and a total capacity of 35. And staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in the staff report, including the site improvements stated before.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Commissions, any questions, or Collette before she takes the seat? Comment? Thank you, Collette. Here to speak in favor of this application is the applicant, Javier Santos.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. We, basically, I'm a family owner with a small restaurant.
Mr. Santos?
Yes, sir.
Start by giving us your name and mailing address, if you don't mind.
I am Javier Santos, I'm the owner of Sabour Carabinho on 7616 Sewell's Point Road in Norfolk. And it's a small family restaurant. We just serve food pretty much all day, and we're just trying to provide to the family to come and ask for some wine or beer with their meals, to be able to provide that, and also to have a decent earnings living, you know, support the family, keep the business open. Nothing major.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Also here to answer questions regarding this application, Alan Sullivan. Okay, and here to speak against this application, Mary Simpson-Jones.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Simpson-Jones. I live at 7505 Pauling Court, not too far from the restaurant. I would like to inform you that Salvador came to the, I'm the president of the Civic League, and they came to us in 2016 for a request to add wine and things, and we said no. I was appalled that, when I got the application for the permit, that we were not informed. They know that we meet from September through May, but yet they applied during June. They did not give us common courtesy. I have been, I have been surveying the place. They don't have less than, I think, 25 or 26 parking spaces. You've got two hair companies that do braiding and Dominion Hairdo, so that takes up a lot of space. Plus, you have a contractor there that shares another space with another building that leaves a truck parked out there every day. Then you have Lido Inn down the street. You have the Plasma Center, which we have been having problems with, with people going across that way. Captain D's Restaurant is near by them. We have businesses, a large rooming house where tenants are staying, an insurance store, appliance store, the barge company, and a large church, which will be at the timeframe that they will be in operation on Saturday. Sewell's Point Road is a busy road. You cannot park on the side of the road. You cannot, with the buses going through and traffic going through, we have a storage unit that has been recently been placed there. We, as Civic League, we felt like we would not do respect with them coming to us, in which we would not have been in agreement regardless of what things they were going to do, because it's not enough space for all the business there. And the women who know, they go to the beauty parlor, you know how long you may be there. So parking space is a problem, and from the picture that shows, it does not look like that. I go there by the morning time because I go to North Side Pool. I have been there during the daytime, all they have but one handicap parking space within that 25 or 26 unit. And as the president and the members I have talked to, we are not in agreement. I had faxed over a letter, and I don't know if you all had received it or not, but I do have some hard copies here, if you need to see it, to kind of break it down more.
Ms. Jones, they're operating now as a restaurant, are they not?
Yes, restaurant, and I have been there two or three times, and it's quite quaint as a restaurant.
So then is your contention, Ms. Simpson-Jones, that the addition of this on-premise alcoholic beverage sales would be a negative on the surrounding community?
Yes, it definitely would, with the community that it is, and with the traffic flow, with the other business over there, with the parking, and even how it's kept up. And then the businesses that you have there will be congested, and with the, with handicap parking, as you see, it's not, it's not good for a handicap person.
Would it be any favor to you and your members if we had asked this applicant to meet with you folks? Are you convinced that that wouldn't make any difference in terms of what their position is?
That wouldn't make any difference, because just like at Coronado, they had put in an applicant for that store that's on Sewell's Point and, I don't know, Weegeon Road or whatever, and it was not in agreement. We are like somewhere in the same area where traffic is busy, and on a Sunday or Saturday, the hours are not feasible for the community.
I think you're making reference to the store at the corner of Weegeon and Sewell's Point?
Yes.
Okay. They do not have, as I recall, off-premise alcoholic beverages.
Right, but I remember I went to one of their Civic Leagues and they had acts, but then when it came before council, it was not in agreement. And I feel like where we live, that this place, we're not trying to take any money. Like I said, I've been there, it's a nice quaint place to eat, but with the alcohol or whatever, I feel like with the Plasma Place being over there, whatever, after they get there, $25 or $30, they may come over there. You know, and this Southern Shopping Center is like Four Licker Places and Wine Places over there. So I have done research to see what's best for our community. And the bus routes that comes through there, the traffic that's come through there is horrendous. So I would like for you to take in consideration that if they do want to meet with us again, we're more than open to meet with them. Our next meeting is September 25th, Norview Center at 7:00.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Oh, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Jones, commissioners? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have time for rebuttal, Mr. Santos.
Mr. Sullivan, you didn't speak initially.
Yes.
Mr. Santos did.
May I allow him to speak?
Certainly.
May I allow him?
No, you are allowed. If he wanted to speak, he should have spoken when he was called.
Lenny, we do have flexibility if he wants to yield his rebuttal time to someone else. He has that flexibility.
That's your call.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Alan Sullivan, four-twenty-nine York Street, Norfolk. Colette, do you have the email from July that we reached out to the Civic League and requested to go to the meeting?
Yeah, it's in the last page of your stuff.
What was the feedback from that, sir?
No response.
Mr. Santos, wish to share anything?
Yes, I would like to.
Please.
I am a landscaper myself, and I'm one of the big believer that, as a community, when we have a small business coming together and gathering people that come to enjoy a good meal, I'm the first one to believe that the site always looks good ever since we took that restaurant. And it has not changed what happens outside. We, when somebody come and eat and drink a glass of wine or something, it doesn't change anything, you know. Like a lot of you guys, maybe one day you go for a dinner, take your wife out, drink a glass of wine and go home. We are not a bar. We are not a music place. It's a restaurant like you go to college and sit down and eat. We don't have a dancing place. I know that bars and things, people overnight, they tend to get too excited. I have a daughter and a wife. We go home by eight o'clock. That we just provide food, mostly during the day at dinnertime. I don't see why that we affect what goes on around it. I just don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Simpson Jones, if you'd like to have anything further to say at this point, the microphone is yours, ma'am.
I would like to comment on the area where he said he sent the email. My telephone list that we sent out flyers. And if he had come to our meeting at the normal time, we would have allowed him to speak at the meeting. We have an open door when people have concerns. So I have not received the email. And I don't know how they reached out to us, but our meetings have been the same since I've been president for five years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Jones, do you have an email address?
Yes.
Is it mjonesonesevensix@cox.net?
Yes, it is.
All right, because on August first, they they sent an email to you.
I have been looking through all of my emails. That's how I found out about this meeting today. And I called Ms. Colette about that. So I researched my emails.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any question or comment?
I just got a question. Colette, can you go back to the hours of operation on this one?
Eight PM, six PM.
They're unchanged, correct?
Eight PM.
Unchanged, correct, Colette?
Correct.
Any other question or comment, commissioners? Mr. Newcomb?
The motion is to recommend that the special exception be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
While I understand Ms. Simpson Jones is concerned, this is clearly a strictly a restaurant. It's not a bar. They're closing at eight PM. I just, I don't see adding on on-premises alcohol for a glass of wine or beer during dinner is going to increase traffic that much with the restaurant to affect to affect what's happening today and as far as where it's operating successfully today. So I don't see a big change with that. So with that understanding, I vote aye.
Ms. Austin?
I concur with Mr. Hale's assessment of the issue, and I vote yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye, we'll make that recommendation to council. Good luck. Next item, Lenny?
Next item is number five, seven-eleven, for a special exception to operate an establishment for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption at eighteen-seventy-seven East Ocean View Avenue, Suite eighteen-eighty-one.
Thank you, Lenny. Chair acknowledges no opposition here in favor of this application. Javod O... I keep forgetting about our new format.
I need my, I need my time today.
I'm sorry, Chris. Old habits die hard.
Exactly. We're still getting used to it. This is an application from seven-eleven for a special exception for sale of alcohol for off-premise consumption at eighteen-seventy-seven East Ocean View Avenue, Suite one, eighteen-eighty-one. It's located on the south side of East Ocean View Avenue, at the corner of East Ocean View Avenue and Cape View Avenue. And it's, the area is developed with commercial and residential uses. The proposal is, or the need for the special exception is that the existing seven-eleven on the site is changing the management. It's going from corporately owned to managed by a franchisee. So that's why they need a new special exception for the alcohol. Site is Zone C two corridor commercial, and it allows off-premise alcohol by special exception. I will also say, this this application came through a year ago for a number of changes. There were numerous landscaping improvements and site improvements that came through. So the site has been cleaned up quite a bit. The hours of operation, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, for the convenience store aspect of it, which they have a special exception for, for the alcohol. It's six AM to midnight, seven days a week, unchanged with this application. And we did receive a, just an email of no objection from the Cottage Line Civic League for the transfer of ownership. I did receive, I didn't want to say on the record that I received a phone call from a resident across the street in the condominiums, Ms. Ann La Patina at eighteen-sixty-two East Ocean View Avenue. She's opposed to it because of the alcohol. With that, staff recommends approval of the special exception with the conditions included in the staff report.
Chris, thank you. This is an existing seven-eleven?
Yes.
And we only changed it from corporate ownership to franchisee?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any questions to Chris, commissioners? Chair does want to acknowledge Mister, as I tried to do before, Javod, help me with the last name?
Coram, sir.
Aramsom. Any comment you'd like to make, sir?
No, sir, just answered a question.
Chair acknowledges no opposition to this application. Mr. Newcomb?
The motion before you is to recommend the special exception be approved, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye, we'll make that recommendation, council. Good luck.
All right, well, we're going to move now to new business. And that would be the institutional development plan for the Lee, Centerra Lee Cancer Center at sixty-two forty-one East Virginia Beach Boulevard. And Susan Pollak is going to present that item.
Okay, so on the screen is a photo of the Centerra Lee campus. It is located on the southeast corner of Kempsville and Virginia Beach Boulevard. It is an I N two, which is a campus institutional, meaning that is a campus of at least ten acres large. In two thousand and six, the photo on the left-hand side was the master plan that was adopted. You can kind of see, it's a little small, but on the top of your screen, you can see the building that was proposed here, which, as I mentioned downstairs, was originally proposed for up on Virginia Beach Boulevard. And hopefully you can see the entrance that leads from Virginia Beach Boulevard, and it kind of cuts down through the campus. When they presented their new plan for this cancer center, some things changed. The location of the building changed. And then you can see the road that led kind of through the campus was eliminated. So they were required to come in and amend their their institutional development plan. So the proposed development does comply with all of the development standards except for one. In the I N two district, you're required to have a twenty-foot front yard, and that would be along Virginia Beach Boulevard. They are only proposing a ten-foot. However, when you look along Virginia Beach Boulevard, all of the properties in this area are Zone C two. They have a ten-foot setback. So by allowing a ten-foot setback, they're really matching everything else that is there. So they are allowed to request a waiver for that. So as part of this application, they are requesting a waiver for their front yard. The cancer center is a hundred and seventy thousand square foot building, contains several things, radiation oncology, diagnostic imaging, breast center, and a clinic and research space. It is a four-story and masonry glass building proposed. This is a view kind of sort of from Virginia Beach Boulevard, kind of from the east looking on. And then this is looking to the rear. They do have a rain garden, I think they call it, in the back. They do meet, one of the requirements of the institutional development plan is that they provide some open space, and they do accommodate that. There are also sidewalks around the site to provide for pedestrian access to the building. And then, as I mentioned, in the plan that was adopted in two thousand and six, they did show that street that was providing access internally. Part of our discussions with Centerra Lee is that they do propose further expansions. They are in the process of acquiring some additional property that is located right at the intersection, as well as removing another building. So that is going to be probably another amendment to their plan. But for now, what we wanted to see was connectivity, because that intersection is not a good intersection. So we did want to see some interconnectivity between this building and the site, so people don't have to leave the site, go out onto public roads, and then come back in. So they have shown a conceptual... I think I had that up front in their general plan. I don't know if you can see it. There's a little blue arrow that leads from the parking lot to the parking lot, which would allow them to access the southern portion of the campus. We do have a condition in there that does allow for some flexibility. So as they go through site plan, they could work with Public Works to make sure that access does work for them and for us. So with the conditions, which are the access and building in accordance with the site plan, as well as the waiver that is required, staff is recommending support of this IDP.
Susan, ten acres includes the hospital site?
The whole campus.
Whole thing, okay. And not just the cancer center, right?
Right, correct.
Any questions to Susan, commissioners?
The motion before you is to recommend that the institutional development plan with a requested waiver be approved. Mr. Hales?
I want to vote aye, but I'll ask Susan, when they come back and they acquire that little piece of property, if you could work with them, that feeder lane problem when it comes back to again, it'd be nice to get rid of that whole problem in that area, so. But I vote aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Newman?
I'll echo Mr. Hale's concerns, I vote aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Did it a third time. It's, I think that's the last section of Virginia Beach Boulevard and I said it right up in there that has that feeder lane. And it's kind of dangerous. So if they might can incorporate some way, shape, or form, doing something to eradicate that unsafetiness, make me happy, but I vote aye.
Yeah, difficulty with that is it's part of a larger
Yeah, I know.
portion of VDOT plans. All right.
A little bit helps, right?
Item number two, Lafayette Boulevard PCR Road District Development Certificate. This is for twenty-seven oh-one Lafayette Boulevard. It's converting a commercial building to a single-family residence, and this will be presented by Susan Pollak.
Okay, so this is a site that's located on the southeast corner of Lafayette Boulevard and Lenz Avenue. Again, the property is actually Zone Residential. However, in its former life, it was commercial. The commercial ceased, and then the applicant purchased the property and was made aware that he had to use it for residential purposes. It is in an overlay that requires a development certificate. When you make modifications, obviously converting a building from commercial to residential kicked you into the development certificate. So the applicant came before you with some modifications to the building. Again, this was a tricky one, because you're turning a commercial building into a residential building. You all referred it to the ARB, the Architectural Review Board. This is some photos of the site now. As you can see, it is a commercial building. And this is what the ARB finally recommended approval after multiple visits with the applicant and the ARB. So it would turn, would indeed turn in this commercial structure to residential. You've got residential doors, windows on the side where there was a commercial window. You've got that turned back into a residential-style window. Additional windows were added on the side. And then you can see kind of the little middle picture is where there was a garage door that will be turned into an actual door residential, and then a window added as well. And this was after many months of working with the applicant, and the ARB did recommend approval to forward that to you. So now it is before you as part of the development certificate for that overlay. So I think we've gotten a fairly decent product out of what we started with. We also will be requiring him to put some landscaping in the front, add a tree. And then there was, there's another condition about narrowing the driveway to the rear. I think it's thirty feet now. We would require him to narrow the apron to twenty feet as residential style. Commercial is thirty. We want to go down to twenty, which is residential. So with those conditions, staff is recommending that the application be approved.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan. Any questions, Ms. Pollak, commissioners? Thank you. Lenny?
The motion is recommend the Lafayette Boulevard PCR District Development Certificate be approved with the conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraley?
Aye, I wish you luck with that. I had some emotional challenges, I guess, when this first came before us, but I do vote aye, and I wish you the best with it.
All right. The third item that we have for new business is a vote by the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing to be held on October seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, at six PM in the City Council Chambers, eleventh floor, City Hall Building, Civic Center, Norfolk, Virginia, to essentially consider the adoption of a revised zoning ordinance. And Jeremy is here to answer any questions on that.
Is this something new? I haven't heard about this.
You haven't heard about this? I'll walk through this.
That won't be the first time you hear that comment.
Just to catch you up, Mr. Hales, I'll walk through this real quick for you. So just a background, we have been doing, working on the zoning ordinance since two thousand and fourteen, so we're three years in. We have had many, many discussions about this. We've talked to lots of different groups, including outside groups. These aren't all just planning. I've talked to you guys lots about this, but there are also lots of Planning Commission meetings, or outside meetings as well. The over three hundred and fifty people number is misleading. We have talked to probably several thousand people through all those meetings, but at our, at our, the seven or eight meetings that we've hosted, we've had actually pretty decent turnout. But some of them, all the other ones, I don't have attendance figures for, so. So we are, it's time to start wrapping things up. We have three remaining tasks. We're in the process of doing our outreach. That's been going on through the summer, our final outreach. And then we have, we have to have by law a Planning Commission public hearing and a City Council public hearing to adopt a new zoning ordinance. So, long story short, not going to go into the details on the public notice requirements, but we do have, we are required to notify the residents of the city of Norfolk. We are doing this, so we are following that. We're actually doing a little bit differently than we expected going in. And what that means is that, at the end of the day, we are looking to adopt a little bit more of a basic ordinance at the end of this, at the end of this year. And then follow-up in two thousand and eighteen, we'll do a couple of extra pieces. As we work through it, I think those extra pieces are going to be only a handful. But there are a few things that, because of the notification requirement... Uh, but there are a few things that because of the notification requirements, we need to, we need to take those separately, and we'll follow on, uh, with that. So just to cover our outreach, we are intending, um, several methods of outreach prior to the public hearings. Uh, these would include, um, online opportunities for people to, to ask us questions, to find out on, on their own, um, what the zoning ordinance might mean to them. They would include e-mail and phone, um, several open houses that we're looking to hold, and in-person office hours at different locations around the city. The goal of all of this is to, um, really let people know, everybody know, what it means to them. Um, not so much give you all the information about the ordinance, but to find out that, eh, what the, what the zoning changes will mean to you, um, in particular, to really target and personalize this. Uh, and so that's why we're setting up this process is to, is to inform, but also to really, um, let people understand what's, what's actually, what this actually means to them. So we are required by state law to have a public hearing. That is actually the reason why I'm standing up here, um, talking to you. So we are intending to have a public hearing, uh, on October seventeenth, Tuesday, October seventeenth, um, at, to allow Planning Commission to collect, uh, input. That would be followed up then, um, our intention is in January with a City Council public hearing. Um, and then hopefully an adoption, um, early two thousand and eighteen of a new zoning ordinance. So what we're asking you this afternoon is to, um, set that public hearing for the special public hearing for Planning Commission on October seventeenth. Uh, the hearing, the purpose of the hearing is to repeal the existing zoning ordinance and adopt a new zoning ordinance. Um, and we was, we would set it for Tuesday, October seventeenth at six P.M., uh, in this room.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, any questions of Mr. Sharp, Commissioners? With that, Mr. Newcomb?
The, uh, motion is to schedule a public hearing to be held on October seventeen, two thousand and seventeen at six P.M. City Council Chambers, eleventh floor, City Hall Building, Civic Center, Norfolk, Virginia. Mr. Hales?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
Mr. Fraley?
Aye, looking forward to that, Jeremy. Thank you. Um, Mr. Millie, do you have anything for the commission?
No, Mr. Chair.
Uh, George?
No, Mr. Chair.
One, one, one small note. You do have put at your desk was the recorded
Yes.
uh, restriction. Mr. Miller appeared earlier at this meeting, and what he felt was he was compelled to show you that he had done what he promised to do. He gave me the copies and he left. And I promised I would tell you all that they were in front of you.
We do have them, and so noted. Thank you, Lenny.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioners, any comment? Very none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.